Sounds like you're better than I thought.
Yeah, go from cold to hot to storms, right?
So the speakers are off, but there's closed captioning on, so it is translating to your thing.
Oh. Testing it. Need a little more room there, Scott. They're making good quick progress on the site, Nick.
I see that.
Can you hear me okay, Bruce?
Yes, I can, Jim. Thank you. Just gonna check for audio. Sounds good.
Yeah, I've got you real good, too. Thank you.
Yep.
Hello, this is Sammy. Bruce, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you very much. Can you hear us?
Yep. Yep, I can hear you. Thanks.
And Dave Fisher, can you hear okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, thank you, Dave. Okay. EJ, are you online? Maybe not. I see another dial in user. EJ, would you like to check your audio with us?
Yep, can you hear me?
Very good. Thank you, EJ. Guess I should check your audio, too, Trevor.
Yeah, I'm here.
Great.
We're back.
Okay. So looks good there. All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Welcome to the Atkins City Council meeting for Tuesday, March eleventh. This time, we'll ask all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and begin by roll call of the members present. That's Trevor Durski.
Present.
And then online, we have Jim Kane.
Online.
David Fisher.
Present.
Samantha Peterson.
Present.
EJ Bell.
Present.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number two on the agenda. This is a motion to approve the agenda. If you so wish.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. The roll call vote will be Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number three. This is a consent agenda, which includes the approval of the City Council minutes of February twenty five and the list of bills. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Barking.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Questions?
Is that all of the emergency water main expense?
Mm-hmm.
From the big break? Yeah.
Okay, hearing no further discussion. Moving on to the roll call vote. Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
And EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, urban renewal area for the Stonage Developing Housing Project, TIF items. This is the third consideration and adoption of ordinance two, two hundred and thirty, deleting the property from the Tax Increment Finance District for the Atkins Urban Renewal Area of the City of Atkins pursuant to section four zero three point one nine of the Code of Iowa and approval. This is our third and final consideration of that ordinance reading. We'd ask for a motion to approve. Anyone so inclined?
Motion to approve.
I can, I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, third reading. Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Nay.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Nay.
Motion carries. Measure is adopted. Moving on to item number five. This is the consideration and approval of resolution authorizing participation in Iowa Administrative Services Retirement Investors Club. Rick has an alternative retirement program for the city administrator, Scott Florrie. And I'll let Scott have a minute to explain that.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Got in your packet a resolution, as the mayor indicated, authorizing the city's participation in what's called the Iowa Retirement Investors Club, four fifty seven, four oh one A programs offered through the State of Iowa Department of Administrative Services. I would be the only employee participating in the plan. As of course, explained to you previously, that I would have to opt out of IFRS within the first sixty days of employment here with my new employer, the City of Atkins. But I'm one of the few physicians under the code that can do that. And under the IFRS regulations, for me, IFRS really offers very little to no benefit for me going forward. So this is just an alternative retirement program. So the city, instead of making a contribution that's legally mandated for IFRS, you would be making that same amount to this particular program through the Department of Administrative Services with the state. So probably don't have anything more on that one, unless anybody has any questions.
No, I guess I would just add that I know that's a popular program in the state of Iowa for city municipal employees in that capacity.
Yep, yeah, that's a good point, Mayor. Actually Doug Herman was, was city attorney, was a previously a city administrator, and he's actually the one that introduced me to this program. And when I kind of kicked the tires, I found out about, I think, maybe a third of my colleagues or that sort.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Begin with the roll call vote. Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
And EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number six now, the twenty twenty five sanitary sewer line pipe bursting project. And Scott.
Yep, I'll go ahead and give a little background on this one. Mayor and Nick is also gonna cover this with me. So what we have on the agenda tonight, just going through your packet materials. I inserted a copy from the budget materials. This was referenced as capital improvement project priority number one. The city had budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty five for this project. And it's described here in the budget papers as the sanitary main between manhole forty A and forty. Again, estimated at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the budget purposes. The next sheet's just a vicinity map that shows generally speaking where the project location is. Then another sheet that shows where the limits of the construction would be and temporary easement descriptions there. So and then just a few more plan sheets that identify kind of the nature of the improvement. So this is a project, again, that was for the budget. There was actually a construction number generated for the budget purposes from a contractor. It's about a year old, so it's been increased a little bit. So Nick's got an engineer's opinion of probable cost of construction on this, about ninety two thousand dollars. So just a little bit of an increase from what that estimate was that was gotten from that contractor back in January of twenty twenty four. This is a project that involves the pipe bursting method, commonly referred to as sort of trenchless technology. So it's about a hundred and ninety lineal feet of eight inch reinforced concrete pipe that's badly deteriorated. We think may be kind of original vintage nineteen thirty eight, thirty nine, perhaps, that that has been in the ground since. Some of the chemicals that the water treatment plant uses to treat the water, a portion of it comes out into this, this water. Water comes out of the sanitary sewer line. So over the, you know, sixty or more, seventy, eighty years that this has been there, it's kind of deteriorate way, deteriorated at this, the diameter of the pipe. So Jared and Todd had some video, I think Nick also. So I've got the opportunity to look at the video. And yeah, the pipe is down to the aggregate. So it's one of those that I would probably describe as a fairly high probability of failure on this pipe. We don't have any real samples of how much diameter of the pipe is left. But when you're down to the aggregate exposed and you can see that, probably not much. And this is a critical location with the water coming out of the, the water plant. So the idea would be to review this project. Nick can review the construction methods here tonight with the council. But then the idea would be to come back at the meeting on March twenty fifth and set the date for receiving competitive quotes. Talked to the city attorney about this. And since this is, he and I both would consider this to be a maintenance level project. So wouldn't require going out for formal competitive bids. But the process works that we would still mimic that quite a bit by soliciting competitive sealed quotes. So at the meeting on March twenty fifth, you would set the date for receiving competitive quotes. Here at City Hall, probably would, Nick and I have to work that out, but probably like ten o'clock on April sixteenth, we would receive those competitive quotes here sealed. We would open them, come back to the council. It's your, that April twenty second meeting with a recommendation to award the contract to the successful, most responsive low bidder for the project. And then approve the, the contract and bonds at a subsequent date. And hopefully start construction on this one in May. Nick mentioned it's probably about a three month window for construction on this. I'll let him talk about the, the pipe bursting method. But it's kind of a neat process where they insert this device down the eight inch diameter RCP pipe. And it really kind of explodes and breaks away the sewer pipe that's there now while simultaneously pulling through a new eight inch HDPE pipe in there. So obviously, it's not, it's, it's a little more costly because you're not excavating the yards and tearing up the yards and everything. So you kind of dig a pit at one end and a pit at the other end, and then, then this kind of goes down there. There is also some manhole lining that's gonna be done as part of this project. So do a little manhole lining work there. There's one sewer service lateral that be reconnected as part of the project. But that's about it. I'll let Nick kind of review kind of the specifics about the engineering process here. But we, again, this is something that was in the fiscal year twenty five budget, but I just want to make sure. It's been a long time since we probably have talked about that. Make sure everyone's comfortable proceeding with the project before we, before we come back again and ask to set the date for the receipt of quotes. So that's all I've got, unless there are any questions?
Nick, if you'd like to explain that.
Scott did a pretty good job of explaining the project. This one is in general fairly simple. We're just replacing the pipe with trenchless method just because of its location. It's situated between two homes. And so a traditional trench method is, it can work in this instance, but just to help protect the home to minimize any disturbance to the homes, the yards, we went with the trenchless insulation method. There will, there will have to be some excavations to redo or reconnect the sewer service, but it'll be fairly minimal to just that, that location. And they can pinpoint that location with some televising that we have done. We will be coating the manholes as well, the interior manholes, just for extra layer protection. So that if there's any erosion or any corrosion that affected those manholes, this would, this would take care of it also in the rehab process. So we are working with Todd, and Todd is working with his chemical suppliers to kind of help reduce this issue so we don't just push the problem down the road. So currently, the downstream sanitary sewer lines all look good. So as long as we can kind of control, adjust some things to the water plant, we would anticipate this not really being an issue moving forward in the future.
And Nick, how was the, this issue discovered?
Actually, a part of, as a part of the plan and televising program that we started to last fiscal year. So.
Excuse me, Bruce. I didn't hear that. Was that part of our televising or?
Right. To summarize there, it was part of the, it was discovered during the televising project, maybe two fiscal years ago? Or last fiscal, last summer?
Last, it was last, last summer, I think, somewhere.
I know we've been doing that in phases. I just wanted to make sure. Nick, is, is that the apartment buildings or the house next door?
It's, it'll end at the apartment buildings. So it's the, it's, it starts in the alley direct, or just north of the water plant. And then it heads east in between those two houses, the first two are second or third house.
Between, between the apartment building and the house?
No, we're not going that far east.
No, it's, it's between the second and third house on First Avenue.
The first house is the apartment building?
No, this is on the, on the west side of First Avenue.
Oh, okay. The, the map I showed, I thought it was on the east side. It looked like it was between, did I read that wrong? It says between first and, oh, yeah, it is. I'm sorry. It is between first and main. I thought it was between First Avenue and A Avenue. My apologies.
No problem. And is that usual, Nick, that we'd have a sewer line between the homes like that?
Um, you know, it.
No, that was done that way, Bruce, because they didn't want to disrupt parkage at the time. That's a special deal there that they, that we did when we put the sewers in in sixty.
Normally, we would do something like that, but, you know, back then, you just never know what, what they decided to do, so.
Okay. Right. That's all I have. Anyone else? Any other questions?
After this, after this, what's the next, what's number two on the priority list? I think this is number one, right?
Uh, yep. There's, I want to say it's, there's a section on railroad that has a dip in it. And it's.
Yeah, Nick, if I could, would you, the folks online can't hear real well. So if you would, maybe just come up here if you'd like. There you go.
Sorry, I thought it was talking loud enough.
That's fine.
So I think the next section was on railroad going east from Northview. There's a section there that has a dip in it. And then over on the east side, I think still along railroad. But by the county conservation, there was another chunk of pipe that had, we found some irregularities in it. So I think, I want to say those were kind of the next two chunks in terms of the sanitary sewer priorities.
Okay. Because this is, this is the forty eight to forty nine, right? Manhole forty A to manhole forty.
Yes.
The other, the next one is forty to two, which is more expensive, actually. Yeah, it's bigger. It's three hundred and fifty. Literacy, it looks like. Okay. Just trying to get a sense of progress. Yep. Traction, working through these, this backlog of, I mean, maintenance or whatever you want to call it, modernization, but yeah. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any further questions, concerns online? Okay, let's, thank you for the introduction, the information. This is a discussion item. And as Administrator Florrie discussed, there'll be further action. And as Administrator Florrie discussed, there'll be further action going forward to prepare all the bids and such. Moving on to item number seven, fire station rebuild project update. And Scott, would you give an update today?
Yep, just give a quick update on this, was mayor council. We had a progress meeting today and of course they're starting on southwest part of the building, doing all the underground utility work. So storm sewer is what they're working on right now and we're out front. You can see they're heavily engaged in removing topsoil and stockpiling that and excavating the area for the building pad itself. So anticipate that that's going to take probably the better part of the next two to three weeks. Of course, weather, weather dependent. Do anticipate that we, as we talked at the last meeting, we will probably be getting a pay estimate at the next council meeting that will be for the pre-engineered building itself. So that's going to be a larger payment, about a quarter of a million dollars for that one. So anticipate that that will start arriving by truck, multiple trucks on or around April tenth. So coming in and unloading that. We do think there'll be a credit coming back to us. There was a change on the springs for the overhead doors in terms of what the life cycle on those springs are. They had spec to a hundred thousand openings. And so the architect thought we could scale that back after conversation with the engineer, which is always kind of what we like to see, as I always refer to as sort of value engineering when we get together. And hopefully there'll be plenty more of these along the way where we can look at some of these and, and make those changes. So I think that'll probably be about a seven thousand dollar cost reduction coming forward on that. They've been working with Alliant and we've had some conversations with them to get the temporary electric service in place out there. So all that's left is to install the meter for the electric and then they'll have temporary electric service out here. Otherwise, I think I'd just say again to the public to be mindful out there on the site. Going to be a lot of activity. So come into City Hall, pay your utility bill, go into the library, just to be present of all the activities that are going on out there. Want to keep everybody, everybody safe. And then I think the last thing we talked about was the groundbreaking. We'd still like to put together that situation, talking to the fire department folks. They think probably an evening would be best for them. So don't have to decide that tonight, but just again, a reminder at some point, maybe the next month here, that we would still like to put together a nice groundbreaking ceremony, just to preserve that moment for posterity, I guess. And that's all I had. Mayor, if you had anything on that?
No, I would agree that it sounds like it would, talking with the contractors today, it would be, groundbreaking would be sometime after the twenty fifth. Be looking at that schedule to see when, when that might fit in with their, their work on the site too. And so they'll have things a little bit tidied up and, and have a good presentation that way. Yeah, it'd be nice to get that definitely done within the next month. And then just inform the public, typically there'd be a ribbon cutting or a hose breaking or uncoupling or whatever they do for, for fire stations. That'll come once the building is completed. Have a, an open house and tours and things like that. So that'll be exciting. Then any, any questions on the project update? Okay, moving on to item number eight, that's the February twenty sixth proposed city budget. And I think Scott has prepared some information.
Just, just again, kind of another update. Want to remind everyone from the last meeting, we had set the date for the hearing on the proposed property tax levy. So if you've seen in the newspaper, on social media, there's like a flood of these from the school and the county and the community college and cities. So that's just a legal requirement that we have to do. So we set that date in our last meeting. So that will be on March twenty fifth. If you recall, that's a special standalone meeting, so a six P M. meeting here at the council chambers, six P M. on March twenty fifth solely for the purpose of conducting that public hearing on the proposed property tax levies. We don't take any action on it, the law just requires that we, we simply hold a public, public hearing on. So just wanted to report that we got that notice published. That was published in the newspaper Saturday is past, I think it was the eighth, oh yeah, March eighth. Was published, so we have it posted online, on social media, so met all the legal requirements there. So we're good to go, just need to, need to hold the, hold the public hearing on March twenty fifth. So been spending quite a bit of time going through the budget, sort of line item by line item, meeting with the staff to talk through items there. Again, to really want to try to scrutinize as many of the expenses as possible and, and also simultaneously looking at some additional new revenue opportunities. But it, it almost seems, I was telling the mayor, it almost seems like every time I identify one, the state legislature is beating me to it and taking it away from us. So we're looking at the franchise fee and that may still be something that we can do. The, the one percent franchise fee on gas and electric. Basically it replaces the one percent local option sales tax. And when I was in Clear Lake, we did that and almost, most all communities have done that by now. And all that does is instead of paying the one percent sales tax, the customer, they pay a one percent franchise fee, but the city keeps the full one percent of that franchise fee. The sales tax goes into sort of this, this convoluted formula that the state has and then it's distributed out through the county. So here in, in Atkins, when, when the residents pay that one percent local option tax, the city only keeps about maybe seven or eight cents of that one, one dollar if it were a dollar. So the rest of it goes to all the other entities in the county, so Belt Lane, Benton, Nervana. Everybody gets a portion of that. So I ran the numbers and I had speculated what they might be on that here. And it was pretty close, I thought it might be around thirty thousand dollars. It'd be about another twenty six thousand dollars into our budget without having any negative consequences at all on the rate payers. But again, as soon as I started putting all the things together on that, met with Alliant and Mid America to get some numbers, the state is talking about taking away that opportunity. So we'll, we'll see where that remains. Some other things, looking at like a solid waste contract, that expires at the end of this year. So been talking to some haulers and looking at the contract and seeing what we can do there. We've got to provide some notice requirements there. So that's something I'd like to take a look at bidding out and seeing, you know, had a good conversation with a couple of haulers and some other communities that use some different haulers and their experiences. So I think that's an, an area where, again, we try to look to see where we can save, save some costs. I think that's, that's definitely an area where we could, could, could save some money on that through bidding now. So, and then also just looking, but spent a lot of time with the EMS levy and I've got that actually under my report here later on, but I'll just get to talk about it now. So back in November twenty twenty three, of course, Benton County passed the EMS tax. And that put a sixty eight cents per thousand of assessed value onto the tax rule. So every property taxpayer is paying that. Now I said assessed, not taxable, so you have to take it times the rollback formula on that. But if you look at just the city of Atkins, that would produce somewhere north of fifty thousand dollars annually in revenue. So looking at opportunities there, time to fire chief, there's an advisory board that's set up through the county and ultimately the county supervisors have a role in this. But, but seeing how we could avail ourselves of those revenue opportunities in fiscal year twenty six for our purposes here within our community and with our fire district, so. But again, just kind of plugging away with staff and Theresa on, on the budget. And so a lot more work to do there, so.
Is that EMS committee, is that, is that identified?
It is, yep, yep. So our, we have two people on it, so I'll be going to the next meeting in April. The fire chief and I will be going to that one. So, you know, we just want to make sure that the, the dollars that the residents here are paying and the dollars that the residents or our fire district are paying, that we're getting the benefit of those dollars here locally.
I would think this community would stand well there given recent investment.
Scott, thanks for doing that. I know we talked quite a bit about making sure that happens, so yeah, it'd be good to get those dollars to come to us instead of, you know, I know we're, I know when Dan had talked about it was a lot less dollars that could potentially come to Atkins, but if we could get that full dollar amount where, you know, since we're the, we're the main one contributing to that, so. But yeah, thanks for doing that. So I mean, hey, and yep, and same thing for the other, you know, hopefully we get that one percent. I know as a council, that's been talked about for, I mean, forever. So, you know, to jump on that, to take care of that, you know, hopefully it stands firm and we can get that, you know, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, that's, that's, I mean, that's, that's a nice little chunk of change, so.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
And that's all we've got on that.
Okay, moving on to reports then.
Bruce, Bruce, question?
Yes, Jim, go ahead.
I've got a question for Scott. There's been a lot of news media on a mailing that's going out on property taxes that's impacting. Is Atkins and Benton County going to be impacted by that, Scott, do you know?
Yeah, that's that mailing, Jim, that's required from when we talked at the last meeting, the county auditor. So we submitted that notice and then the county auditor, so we plugged that information in. Then the county auditor has to send that out. The deadline is by the twentieth, but I think they, we had a meeting today with one of the supervisors and I think those letters have gone out already. But that's again, for the, the city, the school, the county, just again, that it's, it's called the truth in taxation letter. But yeah, that's been mailed out by the county.
Okay, I guess the only thing I'm saying is there seems to be a lot of negative on that. I'd just like to find out if we can some way track any problems. If we're getting a lot of calls and stuff like that, if it disrupts our normal business, I'd like some way to be able to track that just so we have records because we have no control over that.
Correct.
I have a feeling that's going to be able to impact our day to day operations.
Correct. Now, to my knowledge, I personally have not gotten any calls on it. And talking with the supervisor this morning, part of the issue there is if you remember, we talking about that form required us to look at it at a, an assessed value of a hundred thousand dollars and then for, for fiscal year twenty five. And then they assumed that everyone's valuation would increase by ten percent. So if you look at that form, it's, it, it looks like a large percentage increase, but that's based on a ten percent increase in your property valuations. And, and the county only reassesses property every other year and this wasn't the year. So it's highly unlikely anyone had anywhere near a ten percent valuation increase. So it was really just kind of a bad methodology by the state by having us. It's not an apples to apples comparison. So we're comparing a hundred thousand dollar value property in fiscal year twenty five with one that's a hundred and ten thousand in fiscal year twenty six. So that's really where that rub is. People look at that column and see that large percentage increase. But again, that, that would then assume that their property increased in value by ten percent.
No, I understand that. I just know this town and the people in it and they're going to see those numbers and the first thing they're going to do is call City Hall and generate issues and time and we need to be able to track that time that it's costing us.
Yep, now, any, any calls or concerns or emails on that? And, you know, again, if you remember from the last meeting, I mentioned, you know, our total tax base only increased by two point seven, three percent. So, which is, which is fine, many communities are going backwards. But then to assume that, you know, again, we had a ten percent increase, we just did not, so.
No, I understand all that. I just know that the mailing hasn't gone out yet. I haven't gotten mine, I talked to several people that haven't. So once we get those mailings, then when we're going to see the problem.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to item number eight now, reports, or I'm sorry, item nine, reports. Starting again with the city administrator report.
Yep, just give, run through these kind of quickly in the interest of everyone's time. Just wanted to give you a heads up that we are going to be having our annual audit conducted. So the state auditor's office is contacted, they're looking at April to have some staff out here in the field to, to start that work. Now, I just want to point out again that the, the state code does require that the audit be completed within nine months of the end of the fiscal year. So the state auditor's office actually asked the city to request an extension because we've selected the, the state auditor's office to do the audit. It doesn't have to be the state auditor's office. Throughout my career, we've used, one is in a couple of other committees, we use the state auditor. But for the last twenty-four audits, we've used a private CPA firm to do our, do our audit. And I think they seem to get on it a little bit quicker than in my experience. But I think the state auditor's office, I called them, talked to them about it. They have a long backlog of audits that they're working on, limited staff. So they've actually, were the ones that requested that the city make the request for an extension to complete the audit. So since we're beyond that nine month window, they've said, hey, look, we don't have the staff, we can't get it done. Would you request an extension? So Amy did the, the request to the state auditor's office and they approved our request. But it, it really was generated by them requesting it. We, we weren't really technically the ones requesting it. So, so just something to think about as we go forward on terms of auditing and what we might do going forward with auditors and so forth. So again, they'll be here on sometime in April to start that, that audit. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. The next item, the urban renewal plan area amendment update. We had the consultation meeting here today in the council chambers at the city hall. We did have a member of the board supervisors attend, so that was nice. Got the opportunity to meet with them, had a good long conversation, not only about the urban renewal plan amendment, but some other things going on between city and the county, so that was informative. Had a few well-placed questions, I thought, about, about the project and, and the housing opportunities that were going to be created as a result, but seemed very supportive of what was going on there with the city's action and the developers' work. I did also have a, a, a long lengthy conversation with superintendent of schools. So that again, was very positive and, and he expressed his support again for the creation of the housing. Hopefully again, creates some more situations for families to, to locate in the community, puts more kids in, in the school district, so. So next step in the process is Thursday night. We'll have the required meeting with the planning and zoning commission. And their responsibility is just to again, come back to the council with, I call it a recommendation, it's really not quite a recommendation, but just a, a note that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the community, which, which of course it is. So that one will take place Thursday, six thirty here in the council chambers room. So just plugging away on that one. Next one is the FEMA debris removal project. I do have to give again, EJ, a special recognition on this one for mentioning this to me several times about this particular project, give you some background on it. But I've reached out to quite a few folks. EasyCOP is the grant administrator for the debris cleanup project and they're going to be bringing forward a pay request for the city to, to proceed with, with that. So the total amount of this project was five hundred ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. And ninety percent of that is the federal share. So four hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars is the federal share. Ten percent is the state share, so fifty-one thousand, ninety-five dollars. Why that's relevant is this, we can request up to seventy-five percent of the federal share. So we had already previously received, and it was back in fiscal year twenty-three, we received one hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars on this particular project. So what that means is we have enough latitude here that for fiscal year twenty-five, we can file a request for two hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. Now the, the rub is that ten percent state share and the other final twenty-five percent of the federal share, we can't request until the project, because these are conjoined. The fire station was a FEMA project and the debris cleanup was a FEMA project. So until both projects are done, we can't, we can't make that final request for that final thirty-five percent, which is a hundred sixty-six thousand, fifty-seven dollars. But, but we can again, get that request in here pretty quickly for that two hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. So probably you'll see Tom Bruce from EasyCOP at maybe the next meeting or the. from EZCOG at maybe the next meeting or the one after that, but just wanted to give you a heads up that, that we'll be, uh, making that request here soon, uh, for that, so.
What was that additional?
Hey, Scott, on that?
Yeah.
So, I just wanna say a couple things with the council on that. Everybody knows I've been talking about that, I've been talking about that for five years, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we could've gotten years ago, and Scott, I'm gonna ask you, how many hours of work did you put in to get that money?
Oh, like, say, four, maybe, with phone calls and stuff, probably, yeah, four or five.
So, and everybody knows that goes back to two thousand and twenty, so we've had now three count, you know, administrators, you know, city clerks and stuff like that, and so, I, I'm just gonna be honest, I mean, it kinda makes me mad that, you know, four hours worth of work, and I know I mentioned it to previous people, I mean, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars isn't stuff, isn't chump change, and the tree removal project's been done for a long time, you know, so that's, that's the thing is that as a council going forward, you know, we're, we're, we're looking to, uh, shore up money to pay for these projects, but when we got huge amounts of dollars sitting out there, I mean, we gotta take the opportunities to get them, you know, to put the hours worth of work into them and get them, you know, I mean, so far, I think Scott has talked about almost three hundred thousand dollars worth of money in a month of being there, you know, that we're gonna get fairly quickly or within the next, you know, year. So, this is the stuff that we as a council need to focus on wherever we can get money at, especially in the economy, you know, that we're having right now. So, that's all I really gotta say about it. To me, it's pretty frustrating, I think we could've got it a long time ago, but, you know, good God, Scott, you know, for taking care of that request I've been asking and hounding everybody about, so.
Yep, well, thank you, EJ, for bringing that up.
It'll be nice to get that, of course.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And I could tell they got it, so.
Yep, and that just also reminded me of one other thing you mentioned there, uh, so we do what, uh, according to the state, I talked to the person down at the state department of urgent management, and, uh, she thought the turnaround was maybe at the most sixty days, so, uh, we should see something by the time we file, could be forty-five to sixty days, but, uh, pretty quick turnaround.
Well, see, then that's money we can, it can be in the budget in some capacity.
Yep.
So that we're all, you know, trying to figure out, so.
Yep.
Anyway, I just had to say something about it, 'cause to me, it's kinda frustrating, but I appreciate you busting it out, and it'll be nice to get that money.
Yeah, to clarify how that, that process works, um, the tree debris project was completed project-wise in January of twenty-three, um, and then there's a review and an audit by the, um, state of Iowa, so the money was not allocated to us until, uh, middle of twenty-three, and then, then we had, uh, further review process for FEMA to approve that. So, those projects, they're always a reimbursable thing on FEMA where, uh, you, um, you have to do the work, the city has to pay for that, and then, and then at some point in time, you go through all the process of, uh, of filing all of the, uh, all the invoices, and, uh, on a credit-deb line, 'cause he spent hours and hours putting that packet together that, uh, eventually did pass the audit for the city, so, but there's, there is a lot of work.
Well, I appreciate that. Well, I, Bruce, I know that, I, I know that, but that's a year and a half ago.
Right, 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 mm-hmm. No, that's true.
That's, that's all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
But it wasn't five years ago.
So.
But any case, uh.
Well, we knew what the money was gonna be, so.
So, but I just wanted, I.
It should've been a top priority. My concern, what I'm trying to say is, it should've been top concern to get that money back right away. That's, that's what I'm just trying to say, is, you know, we knew how long it was, it's just money getting back right away. That's, that's what I'm just trying to emphasize, when we know it's money, easy money to go get, we wanna go get that. That's, that's what I'm just trying to emphasize.
What's the additional, Scott, beyond the two twenty-six? Thousand, two hundred and twenty-six thousand?
Uh, that is, uh, one sixty-six oh, uh, fifty-seven, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, fifty-seven dollars.
And are these different programs, do you by chance know the difference between that program and the four thirty-three coming on for the fire station?
Yeah, they're, they're different, yeah.
They are, they are.
They are, mm-hmm, yep.
Is the, is the grant for the fire station connected specifically to fire stations?
It, it is, yeah, 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 it was all part of the FEMA, but, uh, yeah, we have to have them both completed before we can get the final thirty-five percent on, on both projects. But, yeah, I've got, uh, same thing, we'll be filing for, uh, money on the fire station for FEMA as we go, uh, but the bulk of that will then take place in twenty-six, our fiscal year twenty-six, on the reimbursement.
Understood. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, next thing is to just quickly go through, uh, the bond proceeds, of course, we, uh, have, uh, received the bond proceeds from that issue here, uh, not so long ago, that's been deposited in the, the bank, so we're working with our bond counsel on that, uh, how that is invested, uh, and then also, I've talked with our bond counsel about transferring some of those funds into the water fund to reimburse the water fund, uh, for some capital projects that were made. There was a resolution that was passed a couple of years ago by the council that identified a number of water projects that had been completed, and so working on trying to get, uh, those funds moved over to the water fund to get that out of the red, uh, so that, uh, we could remove that as kind of an asterisk in, in our audit, uh, running a negative balance there. So, think it's, think it's gonna work out well, but just wanted to give you a heads up that, uh, we got the proceeds, we've invested them, uh, it's a money market account, and they're drawing, I think, about four point three percent, uh, interest at this point. Uh, we, we'll kinda stay on top of that to ensure that we're maximizing the revenue potential with that one, uh, but, and then also just the transfer of those funds to water, so. Uh, the next one, city property and casualty work comp renewals, uh, this is not good news. Uh, we did, Bruce and I met with, uh, our insurance, local insurance carrier here on that, and, and got our renewals for work comp and property casualty, it was a fifty-five percent rate increase, uh, and, you know, we've had some heavy claims over the last few years, and we're gonna bear the brunt of that, and so we've had a heavy claim for a fire truck rollover, and Mayor, you can help me out, I think that was four hundred and some thousand dollar claim, we've had some, some large work comp claims that, uh, the mod factor has kinda gone way up, so, we're, so we're definitely going to be feeling that, uh, in our budget, and so, we are also asking for other quotes, this is with Employers Mutual Corporation, and they do a lot of insurance work for municipality, cities, school districts, counties, et cetera, uh, but there's other companies out there, so where I was at before, we had IMWCA and ICAP, so we did ask our local agent, uh, that we wanna work with them to get another, another quote, uh, from them as well, but just wanted to share with you, we did get that renewal, uh, and it was not, uh, not so good news. Not unlike probably what you see personally, I think Mayor mentioned, his, his insurance went up about eighty percent, you know, it's a tough business right now, so. Uh, already covered that EMS one, uh, the last one I would talk about is, Mayor and I had a meeting with, uh, a building inspector services firm, and you'll have to help me with the pronunciation, GORT, Gordant, GORT, uh, I think they're based in Tipton and Iowa City, and they are, one is a retired building official, the other currently works as a building official in Johnson County, and, and does this after hours and so forth, so we had a really long, in-depth conversation with them, of course, you know, our current building official is anticipated to retire here about the mid to late this month, so we have looked at, again, outsourcing that, think we could do that pretty efficiently in that way, and these two gentlemen were very versed in, in all kinds of topics related to, uh, building inspection services, so seemed like a really good fit, so we're working on a, getting a contract with them that we hopefully can bring back to the council for your consideration, maybe at the next meeting or the one after that, uh, but we'd liked, uh, we, we liked our conversation with them, and thought, thought they were very knowledgeable about their, their field, in America, you know.
Well, that, uh, yeah, on that topic, the, um, building inspection is a, a tough, um, tough area to fill right now, just because there's several classifications of inspections, as well as, we have commercial, residential, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, um, and this firm, uh, seem to have it all, I have to review all that, but once we look at their contract, but, uh, it was encouraging to see someone in the local area that could, could fill that, that need, 'cause we do have inspection requirements on the fire station as well, so, we'll be looking at that.
And we had chat with some other cities about maybe a shared-type position, but that just didn't seem like it was gonna go very far, and, and this group is actually doing the same work for several other communities around the area, so they, I called and checked a few references, got good, good responses on them, so it just seemed like a better fit. And that's all I got.
All right. Then Mayor's report, um, last week, I met with other local leaders at the State House and discussed some, uh, things with legislative, um, folks, representatives up there. Um, as Scott mentioned, there's, there's quite a bit of activity going on right now at the State House with, with revenues available to cities, um, and a lot of it is to, um, it's, you know, one, to keep the cities informed of what's going on, as well as, uh, provide some input, uh, and advice to the folks up there that make the decisions, so, um, that's just important to keep, uh, keep that in mind.
If I may interrupt better on Mayor, yes, uh, and so, uh, I, I've talked to several people that attended the same session that the Mayor did, uh, and, and including our supervisor this morning, gonna be really important to keep track of when we do our budget this year, not just for this year, but start thinking ahead for the next year, because the, the revenue limitations that are being talked about, uh, at the state level, you know, they're talking about a, a two percent limitation on what we can spend going forward. Well, like I said, when the insurance goes up fifty-five percent, and you're gonna limit our ability to raise revenue by two percent, that, that math just doesn't work, uh, so we need to be careful about what we're spending on, can't, can't spend fifteen percent if we're generating two percent on revenues, uh, or we're gonna burn up reserves really quickly here. So, just, I think, uh, you know, conversations about increasing homestead credits, uh, you know, to, right now, they're set at about sixty-five hundred dollars, and they're talking about raising those to twenty-five thousand dollars, see, and that will have a profound impact, uh, you know, the county was quite concerned about that, we'd be concerned about that, uh, so just a number of those property tax issues that, as Mayor said, are being talked about, that we just gotta think about for the future.
They, they did have some other side discussions too on just economic development opportunities, initiatives that the city or the state would like the cities to explore, because we all have a, uh, vested interest in, in growing the economy in Iowa and, uh, making it, making it the best place we can for, uh, the folks that live here, so. And we'll also be filing for, uh, American Recovery Act, uh, funds, uh, those are some that we already have in our possession, and, uh, we've made contacts with, uh, the Treasury Department to get that started, to, um, to finalize those reports, so, that's all I had. So, I guess I would say too, um, through tomorrow, the, this building will not have water service, uh, we currently do not right now, so we appreciate everyone's cooperation and the fact that the restrooms are closed in this building, um, and, uh, we'll wanna get the, that service back as fast as we can, it's due to the construction outside here, of an unplanned, uh, thing that you don't find until you get the ground dug up, so, um, so they'll, we'll be working with the contractor to make that happen as quickly as possible, that they assure us it would be no later than tomorrow afternoon, so, keep that in mind if you're visiting City Hall, so, that's all I had. Any, um, council member reports?
Well, I think there's.
I just wanna recognize EJ, EJ again, uh, thank you, uh, EJ, for being so adamant about, um, getting that money back to the city. Um, I know that you've, you've been after that for quite some time now, and, and it needed to get the attention that it needed, and thanks to Scott, Scott, uh, that's huge, um, that you jumped right on that, you heard what the, the council had to say, and you actually acted on it, I really appreciate that, um, that's what we need, and I appreciate it.
Okay. We also had, um, a bunch of people come together, I think, to work the audiovisual system for tonight, so we're live on YouTube again, uh, we've been out for, I think, two meetings, maybe, I think two, but, um, Jeremy Rolondo, and I think Sandy also, uh, kinda lent some of her experience putting that together the first time, but I know Jeremy was up here, um, we've got software on there now that's letting us use two mics, um, so hopefully sound videos coming through a lot better, and, and just wanted to publicly recognize that effort, so, thank you.
Well, credit to Amy on that one. I would also add that, uh, Mayor and I are gonna meet with, uh, a consultant tomorrow to look at some opportunities, maybe to not go wild, but, uh, just to maybe add microphones and some speakers, and maybe a little upgrade on the camera or something, just kind of maybe some subtle improvements, that, 'cause it's, it's well utilized, a lot of people enjoy watching it, not have to get out and come to the meeting, so we can do that cost-effectively with some, some minor improvements, we'd like to look at that.
That's a good thing.
One of the things that I wanted to, to mention was, um, now that Scott's here, one of the big, uh, constant things I get asked from people in town, not as much because it's got, they've gotten used to the hours, but to, um, getting the council, I mean, getting the city hall open more on a daily basis, you know, I, I still say seven-thirty to four every day, um, but obviously, you know, we can talk about that, but that's something that needs to get done right away. I mean, Scott, I, I definitely want your feedback on that, I know you raised a concern about being Fridays, being closed, and asked about that, and I let you know about that, but, um, but yeah, getting those hours back to the community so they can get up there and do what they gotta do, you know, because I, I still get complaints from that. So, um, yeah, that's something I wanna, that we should talk about immediately, you know, and starting in April, you know, get our hours back, you know, so the community can, you know, do what they gotta do, so, you know, and obviously, Scott, you'd have to talk to the staff, you know, Amy and, and stuff like that, and get that all organized, but that's something that I think we should look at doing right away, so.
Okay, the other council? Okay, moving on to the future agenda item discussion, um, anyone have any things there from the council?
Like I just said, if we need, if that, if that needs to be on the, on a, on the next meeting to actually discuss, I don't know, I know, I don't know how we need to do that, but that's just something that, you know, we need to be all there, or something like that, so, that's what I got.
Okay, Trevor, yeah?
Um, one of the things I think we, we don't have, and we're, it's, it's been identified definitely, and there's a whole list of things that have been identified, so, it's really about choosing what to tackle first, uh, and, and we've definitely made some headway. I think an employee handbook is, is one thing that's been, um, identified, is that, what do you see that in your priorities, Scott, and you, how do you feel about that?
On the list.
Yeah, I mean, is that a priority or is that?
I agree with, hey, hey, Scott, I, I agree with this conversation a hundred percent.
Yeah, I, I'd be something, I think, again, we just gotta put on the list and do, you know.
'Cause I, I marked one up, and I mean, I'm willing to work, well, to take that as a side, side effort with you, or, or, or just lend an extra time on that.
Yep, oh, okay.
You know, I think that's one way we can tackle this, is we, we can, you know, tee things up for the broader council to have a discussion on, but, but it's not in a forum where we can have the discussion yet, so, um, that's, that's one thing I think, coming up. And then, just some, some basic financial management policies, um... And then, just some, some basic financial management policies, the employee handbook would address travel and time off, and it could even address window hours and, and things of that nature, or at least staffing, you know, minimum staffing levels or something, but I think we also probably should have maybe better codified the investment policy statement, and that doesn't even be taken way out of hand, but, but something that's prescriptive, you know, gives a positive indication of, of what, so when you're making decisions like that, right, the council's underwriting those decisions and, and you feel confident being able to make those.
Yep.
I just would love to work, work with you on those.
Sure, yeah, I just think we gotta get a few other things, like you said, just kinda chip away one at a time.
Fair enough, but you're one guy.
Yep.
So, so with, with, you know, all of us and our backgrounds and what we can contribute, there's a multiplier up there, so.
Yep, sure, thank you.
Okay, moving on to public input for items not on the agenda for tonight, does anyone in the gallery have comments tonight? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to the next, announce the next regular council meeting will be held March twenty-fifth, and as the, as mentioned previously, there's a, a meeting at six PM for the public hearing, and then six-thirty PM is the regular meeting, and be here at city hall, council room, and with that, our business for this evening is, is completed, so would we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we'll have the roll call vote, Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson, I believe Samantha's dropped offline, okay, and then EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.